Okay, there you go.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Craig Borba.
Here.
Melissa Cronin.
Here.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
David Kelly.
Here.
And Ed McBride is absent.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as presented? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Okay.
David, thank you. A roll call, please.
Hi, Craig Borba.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin.
Here.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero.
Any public comments?
There are.
The online?
There are no public comments and no one has joined us on our meeting.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda, item number four. Can I have a motion? To the consent?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll take Juanita Garner as the second. You both.
Is there any discussion or concerns about the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
It is accepted four to zero.
Item number five, administrative reports. Is Nancy available for Friends?
She has not responded at this time.
Okay.
I'm gonna say no right now.
That's five A.
If she joins us later, can she add on?
Yeah, we'll go back because that'll be an information item, not a motion.
Okay, I can report on their behalf if you want.
Sir, feeling by the trustees on hearing it from.
I'll just add it to my director's report.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, five B is the foundation and David's not available, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, we'll down, move to item five C, library staff report.
Okay, well now let me report on behalf of the Friends. Library had, even though we're not open to indoor service, we have been very busy doing our library agogo pickup service in the month of September, we had 1,078 appointments, so almost the same exact number as August and even June and July, we've been very steady. We're doing about 250 appointments a week at the door. We are doing pickup service for library materials, books, DVDs and whatnot, and as well as as printing. So you can do mobile printing and send it to the library and we will print that for you and give that to you at the door. And then we're also doing craft kits, which I'll talk about, and people can pick up their craft kits at the door for all ages. We have boosted the Wi-Fi to the parking lot and in fact, I did a check and the North End is the best place to be in our parking lot. The Wi-Fi is very strong out there. We've got an outdoor antenna hooked up so that the Wi-Fi between the library and the bus stop is is full service. So there's a nice shade tree there, you can park in the shade and I'm gonna work on getting some parking signs to designate it a Wi-Fi zone. And so we're proud of that, we're, we know that people want to come inside. Right now, we are, like I said, we're not open to indoor service, but we wait for the direction of the city council to make that determination on when we're gonna reopen. Last month, we did a lot of fun things. We had a maracas craft, it's called Craft Along, so you can watch the video and then you could pick up the craft kit. We gave away all of our craft kits for that program. We have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club next door and they have students there in learning pods and we're working with them. We've got them a library card and working to get the children access to books. We've got some summer reading books that we're gonna give to them and make sure that they have stuff to read while they're in downtime because they're there all day doing their schoolwork. There's about 20, there are about 20 children over at the Boys and Girls Club. Our September adult program was paper bag caramel corn and you can watch that on YouTube. And our adult librarian Sharon made her famous caramel corn in a paper bag in the microwave and the recipe's online with the video and it's a lot of fun to watch and see what's going on there. We are still continuing our virtual programming. We're doing weekly storytimes through Facebook Live and then loading those to YouTube. We are looking for YouTube subscribers. We have 93 subscribers now and we need seven more people to subscribe to our YouTube channel so that we can have a custom URL, so a custom website. We need seven more subscribers. And we've got teen live events this month. Our teen librarian Sean did a tour of the library last week. This week, you're in for a little zen treat. And this month's Craft Along, we're doing a paper bag scarecrow craft. The teens are going to get to pick up full-size pumpkins and a little carving kit and they can have a pumpkin carving contest. Supplies are very limited on that one, so they need to make their appointments for that. And those will be given out the last week of October. Our adult Craft Along program, our library assistant, Yurana Navarro, is going to demonstrate how she does, how she makes Harry Potter potions bottles. And so there will be a kit to go with that. You can pick up some labels and then go home and make those. And speaking of which, we have a fabulous window display right now. So it's great viewing at night, we've got it lit up. One side of the library front windows is for Day of the Dead featuring Frida Kahlo and Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And then on the other, the other window is a Halloween display with Harry Potter potions bottles and all the stuff that we would normally put in the, all over the library. It's all crammed up in the window. So you gotta come take a look at the window, just amazing. And then her son and granddaughter came and did some artwork in the window, just amazing. So gotta go, come see that. We're also celebrating Halloween COVID-style, so, or not COVID-style, COVID safe. Anybody who uses our library agogo service will get a treat back. So it'll be good for all ages and we're gonna have those ready to go the last week of October. We did our first live Zoom event. We had Medicare 101 and that video is on YouTube also, so you can go back and review that. Had some technical issues, so sorry about that, but the information is good. Just Wi-Fi was tricky. We're continuing our book clubs, they're doing very well and we're posting some unboxing videos so that you can see what we're getting. So we bring the browsing to you. And this is some other information. The census 2020 has been extended, the deadline has been extended to October 31st. So if you still have not done your census, please do that. It really helps the city make sure that we have an accurate count. It helps with our congressional districts and so on. So be sure that you do that and support the city. Speaking of congressional districts and whatnot, the Palm Springs Library will be a voter assistance center and that will be open October 31st through November 3rd in our community room. The entrance is on the outside of the building on the south side. So if you've ever voted here, it's the same entrance that you would go in for the normal precinct voting. But as a voter assistance center, anybody can go to that location and vote from Riverside County. So if you live anywhere in Riverside County and you wanna vote at a polling place, you can visit the Palm Springs Library, the Demuth Community Center, or James O'Jesse, starting on Saturday, October 31st through Election Day, and they will, they will be able to help you with in-person voting. Or you can drop off your ballot. And I know at City Hall and the Demuth Community Center, you can drop off your ballots now. So if you've received your ballot and your vote-by-mail ballot and you wanna turn that into a secure location, you can turn it into City Hall, at the City Clerk's Office, or at the Demuth Community Center. Sad news, but it's going to get fixed. Someone kicked in the front window at the Wellwood, the front door with their shoe, just the person wanted to use the computers and kicked in the front door. Luckily, someone from the Historical Society was there and called the police and the person was arrested and the glass is going to be repaired. So if you see a plywood board on the front door, it's, it's being resolved. So we're sad, but it's going to get fixed. And then the news about the Friends of the Library, the Friends pledged to donate $125,000 to the library to support their ongoing, our ongoing services for the year. $84,000 of that is for books and media and the rest of it, some of the things are normal things that we ask for every year, like fish pond maintenance. We ask for $15,000 for summer reading. We asked them to support us with our virtual programming to help us buy some new equipment, so they did that. And we've got, they're supporting all of the virtual programming, so don't worry about the city's budget for that. The Friends are stepping up and supporting us with the giveaways and the craft supplies and things like that. They also pledged $10,000 for Career Online High School because the students are plowing through and I think we've got six graduates already and we've got six students right now and most of them are more than halfway through. And so we're getting a lot of good response for Career Online High School and our dollars are matched from the state library. So any scholarships that we purchase, the state matches one for one. So that's a great deal for us. And yeah, so we're very happy with the Friends of the Library. They're doing a great job stepping up to support us. And that is my report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Jeannie? All right, thank you, Jeannie, for your presentation.
Oh, actually.
Sorry.
I have a question. I'm just trying to get the unmute off really fast. Jeannie, I had a question about the Wi-Fi in terms of, I know you mentioned the parking signs, which is really fun and great. I was wondering if there's any signage at the actual bus stop and if not, if that's something that maybe Sunline would be open to. I know they do a lot of free PSA boards through the city, so I was wondering if, if there's any signage there or that might be an option to maybe get a free board in there from Sunline to help let everybody know that they can use it if they don't know.
I'll find out because that's a good idea. And I don't know, does that bus stop have an ad window?
It does, but I don't remember if there's anyone in it right now. And I know usually they do contracts with the desert cities that permit them to just get, you know, free usage of anything that's not being used. So I'm assuming Palm Springs probably has that and that'd be great if they were.
I know the city has some, has some ad space that they've got. And I know we paid for some when we did our, we did our campaign with, with you all and those bus ads were really cute. So we've got some content with them, but the Wi-Fi might be great because it's right there, reachable from the location.
Melissa, can you, can we be specific on the location where we would want that advertised?
Yes, if I'm understanding Jeannie correctly, it would be the bus stop on Baristo.
Right.
Just off of Sunrise, kind of near the J.C. Frye Center, that's right there.
Yeah, when we did our ads, we were very specific about the exact location. And I know with, it's election season too, so the candidates, they definitely post at a certain stop.
Any other questions for Jeannie?
Well, not so much a question, but I just wanna say congratulations for partnering with the Boys and Girls Club because I know that there's, I remember, especially for our newer members, it was about two years ago, this coming January, that we had a huge community event to actually start a discussion about our library, basically. And there were many members of the community came in and there was a lot of opportunities that were identified for creating partnerships. And I think that was one that was identified. So I just wanna say congratulations on doing that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Juanita, I'm sorry, I was remiss and welcome you to the Board of Trustees. So welcome. And can you share some information about yourself or the other trustees, members, and anybody watching us on YouTube?
Great. So I consider myself a lifelong resident of Palm Springs. My family moved here when I was three years old, so I've lived here most of my life. I was in the Marine Corps, so I was away from home for a while right after high school, but I always knew I was gonna come back home. I love Palm Springs and I raised my children here. And, you know, the Palm Springs Library was such a special place for me and my kids. It was just such a wonderful resource. So being able to serve on this board is so exciting for me. I'm really happy to be here.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
David, word to item six.
Yeah, so Jeannie, I don't know if you can actually put the screen up, share the screen with the board packet, but I believe if we're going to the treasurer's report, we need to get to page, I think nine. Actually, maybe page eight. That is the one. So as you can see from this screen, the cash balance in the endowment is $1,946,049.75. And in looking at last month's report, oddly enough, this number has increased, believe it or not. And the reason why it has increased, from what I can tell, it's increased by $14,000 because our accrued interest receivable, which is a few lines down, is now zero and it used to be $4,000. And our notes receivable has been reduced by 90, from $90,000 to $80,000. So if you add those two figures together, that accounts for our increase in cash. So that's really about all I have to report. The only other thing I would say is to, Jeannie, I know I'm gonna be contacting you within the next week or two. I wanna make sure that you're okay with the interest figures that you got from the city because that's gonna be eventually part of my report for the annual report for the endowment. And all I can go by is what I see on these reports. So if you think there's gonna be some adjustment or something to the interest, sometimes there has been in the past, there was last year, you know, we don't wanna miss any opportunities on that if there are going to be some adjustments. So I would strongly encourage you in the next couple of days or whenever you get a chance to actually shoot a message over to the city finance department and find out whether or not, well, just first of all, just confirm that the $4,000 figure was really all we were getting or that was a figure for the year and then whether or not they expect any adjustments on that.
Right, I'll check on that. I know that this time of year is the time when they're closing out their books for last year. And I did ask about the fourth quarter interest because we didn't, there's nothing logged on that, but they said it's because they have to close out the books. And I know they're, the auditors are doing work right now and there's a, this is surprisingly a frantic time of the year for them. I think in October, it's long, long done, but this is actually the time when they're trying to close out last year and rectify all that. So yeah, I wanna make sure, I always wanna make sure that that interest income actually makes it through to us, so.
And also, if you could ask them if they, if, you know, if they expect to do adjustments, when do they expect to have the final report? That would be helpful for me, too.
Right. And when, yes, I know, I agree.
Other than that, that is my report. There's some other dollar and cents items, I think, that are on the agenda, so I will hold my.
David, for the other trustees, the notes receivable, that was the money from the foundation, is that correct?
That is the outstanding note from, that we, we lent to the Palm Springs Library Foundation. And their note had come due at the beginning of July and we had negotiated with them for a renewal, which ended up being a two-year renewal of their note. But the terms also for renewing it were that, that they were supposed to reduce it by $10,000 a second time. The original note was $100,000, so now it's down to $80,000.
Right, thank you. Any questions for David at this time? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
A motion to accept the report.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Juanita. Jeannie, can I have a roll call, please?
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Four to zero.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion action items. The first one is consider approval of the library annual report. Can I have a motion for that and then we will open it for presentation and discussion?
Well, I'll move to accept it, but are we voting on this motion? Are we gonna wait?
No, no, we're gonna just have the motion, have a second and then we'll have presentation and discussion and then call the vote. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Juanita. Okay, Jeannie, is this your presentation?
Sure, let me, let me find it on the, in the packet and then I can share the screen again. Okay, so this year, we decided to revamp the annual report a little bit. This is, we are required by the California State Library to report our statistics for the year and their statistics are available on their, on their website. So you can go and look at our statistics and compare those with other libraries in California. And you can download the reports in Excel and do, and all sorts of things. So, and as part of the Library Board of Trustees bylaws, you are, you agreed that you would do an annual report of the library to the city council. And so I've prepared this two-page report, gives a kind of a summary of the year, some highlights and some statistics of interest. Our statistics this year were on track to do so well and then we had to close. So our numbers are about, I would, 60% of what they usually are, basically. There were, almost everything's down about 40%. The one thing that did go up enormously was the ebook usage and it went up 31%. And also, we had, we don't have a comparison from last year for Canopy, which is our streaming service, and Acorn TV. We have a little bit of numbers for that, but it wasn't, it wasn't like this. So we had 11,200 streams, if you will, for our, our streaming movie service. So I wanted to highlight summer reading because it was our first year being virtual, talked about the building committee because that was a highlight of the year. That was something very important that we did. And then the Legacy Wall was another important exhibit and that was something that the Friends of the Library was a major sponsor in and it sponsored school bus trips, school visits to the library. They got an educational instruction about the Legacy Wall and an interactive experience with that. And then they also got a little tour of the library, too. So they got to have a double dose of good stuff. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from trustees?
I have a question.
Melissa?
Is this, so this report is distributed only to city council or is it made public in other ways to the more general public in terms of on the website or direct mail or anything like that?
Great question. Normally, so we do make this available on our website. Every year, we have, we have our annual report posted on our website and we do present it to city council and it is an agenda item. They do receive and file this as part of their agenda packet. And so then anyone who's looking at the city council agenda will also see this. And then normally what we would do is we would print hard copies of this and leave it at, in the front lobby here, Wellwood and at City Hall. But due to budgetary constraints and the fact that we are all closed, I've chosen not to print it this year, just to save money, save paper, save the, the risk of transfer between individuals touching paper. So it's gonna be available on our website and with the city council packet. And it's here.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think it looks great.
If you can go further down on the, the streaming, you said it was, went through the roof. What were you expecting prior to the pandemic, the usage number? Do you have any expectations?
We were expecting maybe half of that. We had to go, we had to get grant funding to, to add to the budget and then we had to get the Friends to supplement the budget. And so I think, you know, we were hoping to spend maybe, actually more than that, you know, we were thinking maybe we would spend about $10,000 and we spent about $20,000 on the service. It's very expensive. So probably what will happen is we will end our Canopy service at the end of the year in, in December because we just won't be able to continue to fund that one. Acorn has a lower usage and so we, and also their lending model is a little bit different. For Canopy, we pay for each video that people download. And on Acorn, you get a seven-day pass. And so as a user, you can get a seven-day pass and watch anything through that method. So it's, it's a more economical method of streaming. And Canopy is just, you know, we, we just pay for each one that you watch and it's, it's expensive. It's $2.99, I think, each. So about $3 a person for, for this usage. And so Canopy is extremely popular and they have great movies and great, great TV shows and things. And Acorn, Acorn is good, too. I mean, they've got some great stuff, but the lending model is, is easier on us.
So Canopy costs more than the Redbox?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeannie at this time?
I just have a comment. I mean, other than the fact that it looks great, it really, I think it's very readable and, and, and does at least say a lot about the COVID crisis, which is obviously very impactful. I'm just a little concerned about the statistic that really I don't see represented in here, really, which is that it seems as if usage of the library is down 40%?
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, that's troubling.
Well, we closed, we didn't even get March, we were only open in March 13th was the day we closed. And March is one of our busiest months, so we lost all of that usage, really. So April, May and June, so we were closed three and a half months of that fiscal year. So more than 25% of the year, but.
So the, so for the rest of that entire fiscal year, we weren't doing anything like library agogo, which is featured at the top of this page.
Right.
So library agogo started, I think it says at the end of May in your, in your presentation here. It says, I can see the last little bit of it.
What happened? Did I lose, did you lose? What happened? Did I lose? Did you lose?
Okay, it's coming back.
Sorry.
Yeah, so.
I clicked away to open statistics.
It said at the end of May, we implemented Library Go-Go pickup service. So so I guess the only other month that would have been in here was was June, right, in these numbers?
April.
Fiscal year ends at June 30th, right?
Yes.
So so we missed March, we missed April, we missed May. So we missed three months and then, but we're down 40%. And it's because of what I would imagine you would describe it as seasonality, because we live in a tourist mecca, and there's seasonality, and we've got snowbirds. And I'm just trying to tell a narrative here, so help me out.
Let me look at the totals. Hold on just a second. Let me open the right one. Twenty nineteen twenty, here, I've got percentages. So our door count was down 32%, actually. So last, so in 2018, 19, we had 195,000 visits, and this year we had 133,000. So we were down 32% for door count.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's very, I think we have to be very careful about how we describe what level of of services we've been providing, especially when we say that it's been down any percent. Because there are people watching our budget daily. And to have a precipitous drop in usage in the library makes people wonder, you know, what are what are they're financing? And I would, I would, if we were trying to do a more a proper, a different narrative on this, I think probably it would end up saying that that because of the fact it was closed, it was, there was certainly a drop in services, I mean, because we couldn't provide anything. But I think it's important to really, really talk about the impact of having Library Go-Go, which you really don't see really fully in these numbers. But I think it's something that would be very helpful for all of us who are who are advocates for the library to be able to tell people that since Library Go-Go has been operating, that we've kind of reestablished our operations at, you know, a higher level. And I don't know how you can quantify that, but I would strongly encourage some way of kind of like trying to 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 boost the narrative of this, of these numbers by talking about the successes since June.
Well, because this one ends in June, that'll be next year.
Yeah, but I just, I'm just saying that, you know, be prepared for those kind of questions going forward, especially after people read this document. I mean, in this document, because of the fact that you do have at least a little bit of a benefit of knowing the impact of Library Go-Go, even a parenthetical reference to its success and some kind of numerical proof of that would actually be very useful.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback. I know this type of a report, it's it is tricky to to do to to do because in one way, we want to compare apples and apples. So we want it, we want this to be similar to what we presented in the years past so that you can look across and say, oh, okay, well, last year it was this, and this year it's this. This year, where we got oranges and grapes and everything.
A whole basket of fruit.
We've got fruit salad going on.
Yeah, while you're going through that basket of fruit, though, because the thing is, I don't know how this gets presented to the city council, per se. But if like, for example, if when this is gets approved by us and you're sending it off to whoever in the city council, I would probably in a cover letter to them describe the success, numerical successes of Library Go-Go past June and its impact on the community. And 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 make sure that if you do get called in front of a city council meeting to present these numbers in public, that you have those that data handy. Because knives will be out to look at your budget again, and we're not really providing as strong a service for the public. And I want you to be able to say that we are, because I know we are. And we're really have our hands tied behind our back because some things that are really important to us in the community, as you just said, people are kicking down the doors to use our computers, and we can't even use them. So, you know, I would use that in my presentation, too. So, you know, city council, let's get, let's get cracking on opening up this library.
Yeah, and one thing that you might notice in your current packet, too, is that our statistics, we're gathering new types of information that we didn't before with virtual programming and live attendance and on-demand viewing. And the entire state, the state library recognizes that the numbers are just gonna not compare this. You know, the end of last fiscal year is just has really trashed everybody's numbers. And so this year, they're really looking at ways that they can capture true usage. Because like you said, the the people coming to the door, that's not counted as a door count because they didn't walk through the door, they just pulled up. And and so we count that usage, we count personally, we we track those appointments. So we know when I say 1,000, some used it, that we are tracking that. And then we're tracking the number of items that they check out. And those, and if you looked at our August statistics, they only checked out 8,000 items compared to 35,000 the year before, the the August before. So, I mean, you look at those numbers and they look terrible. But if you think about the the people calling and writing to us and writing to the city and saying, thank you for what you're doing, we're so appreciative to have that service. I mean, that that's worth, you know, the numbers right there, that's.
Right, so I I would almost, you know, if I was like looking at the number of library visits, right? And then I would, I might go to your numbers on Canopy and Acorn TV, which you write here, our demand shot up. So it's like, if I could quantify that and say, if we were counting all those the times people were logging into that system as times that people could have visited the library, are those numbers comparable? Are we are we really providing the services even though we're not opening the doors?
And our database usage in general, which isn't here, but it will be in the state report, that database usage for all, across all databases went up 13%. And.
Right, but I mean, that's another thing that you could put in even in a cover letter or presentation to people, saying if you counted the number of log-ons as library visits, we that would easily account for the 32% drop.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Jeannie, with the Library Go-Go, it's it's obviously more staff-intensive. As people, population comes back to Palm Springs, are we going to be able to provide Library Go-Go without adding additional staff?
I, yes, we might have to, right, right now, what we're doing is our hours are reduced, so we're not open Tuesday nights and Wednesday nights because we need the extra staff here to do to do this Library Go-Go service. I mean, it takes almost three people to do it, to to help a person. So we probably, if we, my, my, my suggestion is that when we reopen, we we definitely want to keep Library Go-Go. We want to keep pickup service because we know that it's a, it's a very convenient service for people. You think about a mom or a dad with a carload of kids and car seats, and they have to unbuckle. And this is just great because they don't have to deal with all of that. We're seeing that across the state. Library directors are reporting that this is the greatest, the greatest service ever, you know? And we think it's important, and we want it, we want to be safe. We, you know, just if, just because the county or the state might open up our area for more use doesn't mean that the COVID still doesn't exist. So we're, we want to continue to be safe and offer a safe option for people. So we want to keep Library Go-Go. Looking at the staffing, right now, I have two employees loaned out to City Hall to cover for staffing there. So I want to, if we reopen, I'll need to bring my people back. And we may, we may just have to adjust our duties. So I mean, we've got some people that are doing different duties right now, and everybody's roles have been modified a little bit. So we're, we're a team, we're doing all right. So I think we'll be able to continue that with our existing staff.
Okay, and how much time between this order being placed and the person receiving the books? What's the turnaround time?
Just a few hours usually, if we're open. So obviously, when we're closed and the holds are coming in overnight, those are just accruing in a report. We run the report in the morning, and we run and get everything, and the customers are notified. If you're notified via email, the email goes out at 9:00 AM. If we've picked, if we've picked up the items in time and they're ready, 9:00 AM, 1:00 PM is the other notification time that emails go out. It's very scientific here. So it's, if you checked your account, it's very possible you could pick up something in the afternoon, usually. So you place your holds overnight or in the morning, you get, you can get your items in the afternoon. That's usually what happens. And and then we do another run during the day, we we send people out as we're, we have different jobs, and one of the jobs is to go out and and be the picker, or the puller, they're the puller. So they pull the items, and so we have that that job throughout the day, too. So it's ongoing all day long.
Any further questions for Jeannie at this time? Okay, I have a first and a second.
Anita has a question.
Yes.
Not so much a question, just my daughter is loves the library, uses it often, and she never stops telling you how wonderful the service has been since it's been shut down. And she's just really happy with what you guys are doing.
Great, good to hear.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a first and a second for the approval of the library annual report. Is there any further discussion on the side? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Anita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yep.
Next actually is agenda is 7B, request for funds to supplement the library budget totaling $77,000. Jeannie, this is your item.
Yes, so at your previous meetings, the trustees have requested some suggestions on ways that you can support the library. Our library budget was reduced significantly. And in fact, as part of my annual report, the we ended up giving up, giving back 8.5% of our budget last year. So we we returned $229,000 last year to the to the city to help with the budget shortfall. This year's budget has been, excluding staffing and other expenses that are fixed by the city, like our human resources expenses and our insurance and things like that, we have a section of our budget called the operational budget. So our operational budget was reduced 37% this year by $223,000. So we are asking that the trustees supplement that budget by $77,000 to try to help us bring that back to a level where we can continue to have a nice continuity of service.
This is on page 17, if there's any questions regarding the dollar amounts.
Right, so we're asking for $50,000 for the book and DVD collection at your mark.
Have you actually put it up the screen on the screen?
Yes, yes, just a second. Okay, so here's the item, let me scroll down a little bit. So we're asking for $50,000 for books and DVDs. And just as a note, at your March 4th meeting, you did approve $10,000 for ebooks. So this 50,000 is in addition to that 10,000 that you already approved. We're also asking for $27,000 for a hardware upgrade, which is due on our automated materials handling unit. That's the big book return, the sorting system, security gates, and self-check stations. And that machine, that that whole system is eight years old. And as you might know, computers get old very quickly and are eight years old. So they're operating on Windows XP, which is no longer supported. And they do need to be replaced so that we can have the system working properly. Right now, we've got one, actually, two, two self-checks that are, one is not working for sure, and one's starting to act up, act very strangely. So and then our our entire, like our whole backend system kind of died the other day. So we're, we're having some technical difficulties with that machine. That project was actually approved in last year's budget from the general fund from the city. But because we had to go into our budget crisis and stop spending, we were unable to complete that project last year. So I'm asking the trustees to support that project. And then I can talk more about the book collections if you need me to.
Questions for Jeannie?
Well, I'll start it off for the benefit of our our new people because I think if I was in your shoes, new people, I'd probably be asking about what are we spending the endowment fund for? And then I would also ask, what is being used to replace the endowment fund? So sticking to the question of expenditures at this point, we've been all, historically, we've been all over the map as far as what this endowment is for. And there's, there's conflicting documents all over the place about, you know, whether or not we would use it ever to pay for a laid-off employee salary, pay for capital improvements to the building, whether it would be used for a consultant. So it really, it really is up to us as trustee members to, you know, to be the wards of this money. And and historically, I I've been told that this money has been quite a bit more than it has been today. So there were millions of dollars more. And over the years, it's been whittled down and whittled down and whittled down. So and the most recent conversations, I think, well, actually, I initially, my, when I got on the board about a year and a half ago, the, there was a lot of discussions about using the bulk of this money to to be used for, you know, a new library or a greatly improved library. And 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 you probably already know about our foundation and its charge, which is to do fundraising for us, and the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, which has already had a demonstrated track record of fundraising for the benefit of the library. So as Jeannie just already pointed out, the Friends of the Palm Springs Library has been very generous in committing to 125,000 this year. And and as Jeannie was also describing, there's a certain amount of their annual donations that probably goes to support, you know, very, I guess, capital-intensive projects that ordinarily the city would pay for. For example, I think Jeannie just mentioned the upkeep of the the Koi Pond, which you would think is something that, you know, that's something that the city should be paying for. In my recent memory, there was expenditure on brand-new chairs. If you've been in the library before it closed, there were these lovely leather chairs that were installed in there. That was a gift of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. If you've been a user of the, the conference room that's in the back of the library, you might have noticed that they swapped out all of those tables that they used to have for ones that are on rollers. That was a gift of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. One of the things that, when we were discussing the, the note for the foundation, was that the foundation, which has been around for a number of years, the loan that was made by the, the trustees to them was to help them to get themselves on their feet and start their fundraising process. And part of the discussions that we had a couple of months ago was really, in my opinion, was really setting their feet to the fire. Because I think, in, in my opinion, the trustees could be doing fundraising on their own, but it's, if there is a group called a foundation who wants to do these big projects, fundraising projects, then they should. And it would be great. And I do recall, there was one time when I actually asked the president of the trustees, I'm sorry, the foundation, and I think our president too, on, on the trustees, whether it would be appropriate if we just transferred the entire endowment over to the foundation. And saying that really, that's what a foundation is engaged to do, right? They're supposed to have a pot of money, and they're supposed to be making these kinds of gifts. And if we're not really doing the fundraising and replenishing the, the, this, this endowment, maybe it's really the foundation's job to do it. So these are all, you know, questions to consider what we do. This is an extraordinary time, obviously, but the library has faced extraordinary times before. There were times when the, there were budget deficits and budget cuts, and we lost a lot more staff in the library. There were times where the library couldn't afford to patch up its, its ceiling. And funds had to come from the endowment to actually help with that effort. So but those were all extraordinary measures. So I think as you look at this request, and keeping in mind that there are going to be future requests for extraordinary items, because these are extraordinary times, what are we doing to, to actually be good fiscal conservative people with this money? So I'll just let that simmer in your heads for a little bit. I have, you know, I have my own thoughts about some of these numbers, but you might have some questions for me, just even based on what I just said. So I'll let that, I'll let you step in here.
Questions for David?
I think, I'm not sure if this is a question for David or Jeannie, but I do want to say thank you so much, David, for all of that contextual information and background on this. I guess, maybe for Jeannie, I'd like to know specifically regarding the DVD number. Is, what have you spent on that in previous years? And kind of understanding that there's going to be a lot fewer new releases in the coming months and year. Does that represent kind of a smaller outlay of funds than you normally would do?
That's a good question. I also, before I answer that about the DVDs, I wanted to clarify, because I know that people might not know what the Croppitzer account is. And I forgot to mention that for the adult nonfiction books, the Croppitzers donated to the Library Trust Fund a gift of about $266,000 from their estate. And that, there are strings attached to that gift. They have either, they want the money to either be spent on a quiet, a quiet reading room, a quiet study room for adults, or you can, if that's not feasible, then the purchase of adult nonfiction books in English. So when I say the Croppitzer account for the nonfiction, if you looked at your, your budget sheets, and there's a line item that says Croppitzer, that's the, that money would come directly out of that one. That is on page, page 10 of your packet. The Croppitzer account has $216,000 in that account right now. And so that's what, that's where that money would come from. So to answer your question, Melissa, about the DVDs, it's an excellent question. DVDs cost us about $20 each. If it's a TV series, it's about $65 apiece. And we do have to pay for processing too, because our vendor takes care of that for us by putting on, putting the DVD, transferring it into a locking case, and does custom artwork for us with the barcodes and all of the security measures that we do on our DVDs. So there's a little bit of fee for that. So we're talking about, for this purchase, somewhere between 800 and 1,000 actual physical items. And in previous years, we spent, for adult DVDs alone, we spend about $40,000 a year for DVDs. We still have some money in our regular budget. So we, basically, our book and DVD budget with the city was cut in half. And so we were hoping to supplement that with this purchase amount. And the Friends did cover some for children. So we've got some money for children's DVDs sponsored by the Friends. And so, and you're, you're right, if there aren't that many new releases, what are we going to buy? But we do, there are so many movies that we don't buy anyway. So with all the new releases, we do. And we do have to do replacement copies of things and backfill. So 800 to 1,000 physical items actually is a really good, it, it'll be easy to do. I'll just say that. It'll be easy to spend that money, because we are constantly creating new TV series or collecting new TV series that we haven't purchased in the past and buying replacements. Things get lost. There is some turnover factor when things get checked out and then they don't come back. We do actually have, we do have losses in that way. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm a little bit confused. So when you talked about the Canopy and Acorn TV, aren't those also videos and TV shows that people are able to, to rent? Or I mean, to borrow?
They're actually not physical items, though. They're just, we pay a subscription fee. So like a Netflix that we pay for everybody in Palm Springs.
Right. So is that, is that something that's going to then be discontinued when this is over? Or is that something we're still going to be using?
No, we, we're not expecting to continue Canopy after December. We think that that's about how much money we're going to have left, because we prepay in chunks for that. And then Acorn, we think, will last all year for that account. So Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong on that one.
So Acorn, I'm sorry, Acorn is just TV shows? Is that all it is?
It's, it's British TV, so it's BBC TV and movies. So it's both. It's documentaries, it's a little bit of everything, but, and you can get home on your own too. It's something you can buy, subscribe to on your own. But we, it's something that we pay for so that you don't have to, just like the New York Times online, we, we have a grant with the State Library for that. So you can have a New York Times subscription at home, and we would pay for that too. So good questions.
So it's not taking the place of our DVDs, our physical DVDs?
No, you know, there's such a huge digital divide in, all across the country. There are a lot of people who don't have internet. We were just talking about that. People don't have reliable internet at home. They, they don't have access to, to Wi-Fi even at their house. So we see a lot of people taking stacks of DVDs home. And so we're providing a service to, to people who really can't. And, you know, even, sometimes, sometimes we have things that you can't get on streaming services too. And so that's another service too that we provide, you know, to save people money. Because there's not, there's not a blockbuster anymore for them to go to and rent. There's a red box, but you never know what's in it. And we have, we currently hold at least 15,000 DVDs in our collection.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Craig, we haven't heard from you.
Well, I'm concerned that maybe some of this responsibility still stays with the Friends and maybe with the Foundation. We have other requests coming forward for the trust money. And I'm concerned that we're just taking bits and pieces, and it's going to just gradually disappear. A lot of this is an expenditure that I think the other organizations should be more responsible for. But I also know that, again, we're in difficult times, that maybe we should be paying for some of this. I'm concerned about us paying for all of it.
Yeah, and you know, my, my thought, I'm sorry, Craig, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the thoughts that I had too was just that, Jeannie, you characterized these numbers as supplementing. So my question would be, does this mean that we are actually bringing your budget back to 100%? Or are we doing less than that?
Excuse me. I don't think we're at 100%. We're, Lisa, is it, are we close though? Okay, she's, she's in the next room. I can hear her talking. So it's pretty close to restoring our book budget. I'd say we're about 80 or 90% restoring that. And the Friends did step up a lot. And you know, Craig, to speak to your comment about, about contributing so much money. In the past, the trust fund did contribute to books and to our book account. So we, we have done that in the past. It's not, last year, what I asked for was just to say, we won't ask for book money. And then the, everything went crazy. So normally, I would have asked for more money in the normal.
Jeannie, I'm just concerned that you can't see into the future. You didn't see the pandemic coming?
Yeah, right. Yes.
Okay, so the Friends gave, contributed how much?
They gave 84,000 for books. Books and they gave eBook money too. Where's my spreadsheet?
And we gave eBook money, correct?
No, you didn't. Oh, 10,000, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, we gave them 10,000 for that.
Yeah, so, and the Friends always give, they always give $24,000 a year for Hot Off the Press. So that, that 84,000 includes their traditional gift of Hot Off the Press money for 24,000 for that. And then last year, they, last year, they gave us a lot of money too for, for books. I mean, last year, their gift was over $200,000 that they contributed to us.
So I, you know, going back to my question, so, so supplementing means we're restoring the budget. As far as the books are concerned, how important is it that we get to 100%, given the climate that we're in economically?
Well, it's definitely helpful. And I know Ed McBride, if he were here, he would talk about continuity of the collection and the services. And when, when you, when you vary, obviously, this is helpful. Anything you can give is helpful. We'll, we'll, we'll do what we can do. But if you have a collection, shortfalls, where you don't spend as much money, then your collection is, fluctuates, and the content fluctuates. Whereas, like, let's take the, the nonfiction collection as an example, because that's where people are doing research, and they're, like, let's look at the science books. This happened at Palm Desert. I, when I worked there, I know, we were, we were checking the collection. We checked, we maintained the collection. We checked the copyright dates. We want to make sure that we have current information. And most of the books were purchased in a certain year, like 2006, because they got a huge influx of money. And then the next years, there were very, there was very little spent. And so then, depending on the collection, whenever it's time to get rid of those out of date misinformation books, you've got a huge chunk that goes away. And so if you, if you keep your collection even, your spending even, it's like dollar cost averaging, you know? You continually put in the same amount every year, your collection is going to be very evenly layered. So travel books are another area where you don't want to have all books purchased in 2015. And then in 2020, you didn't buy anything, because then all those books go away, because they're out of date and it's all wrong. And then you have nothing. So that's what, the continuity of the collection, keeping the spending very similar. And, and we're already telling the, the World Book Encyclopedia people, we're not going to be able to buy an encyclopedia this year. It's $1,000. So.
I'm sure they're hearing that from a lot of people.
We won't, yeah, I know. And so we're not going to have an encyclopedia that, for 2021. It's just, we do have a subscription. We have the World Book subscription online. But it's, it's a decision we're, we're having to, we're having to choose things like that. And and this would help us a lot, keep our options even.
That's kind of what I was trying to get at with the, or beginning to get at with my question about the DVDs, was that I think there's going to be, there already is a disruption in the continuity of content production, separate from libraries. You know, the studios are not releasing films, so there's not new release DVDs coming out. I know publishers are pushing back and discontinuing reprints on a lot of titles, because Amazon distributors are not taking deliveries and things like that. So in terms of purchasing the new books even, is this based on, like, have you seen the latest catalogs? And is there the same volume of new content even being offered by publishing houses, whether it's new titles or reprints of older titles?
That's a good question too. We, we are seeing some titles pushed back in publication, but we're, but not really. I mean, authors are, are very good at writing. They work alone. So, you know, the, I think, the, we're still seeing new content coming out. So we're getting new releases for books. Now, but I understand what you're saying. And I know our warehouse is, is struggling to get us the actual books. But we are putting in our orders, and, and we're, we're seeing our Hot Off the Press book lists are, are still filled with very popular titles. And, and so we, we are still able to purchase a lot of content right now.
No, I, you know, would be, this would be really useful. But I remember from looking at the annual reports last time around, one of the things that I had done was to do kind of like a seven-year look, see what the annual reports look like. And one of the things that I discovered about our library readership is that, that if a good portion of what drives people to come into the libraries is our DVDs, that a lot of people maybe don't have Netflix in this community. And that they're really, you know, even if it was older content, they might be more inclined to, to rent it, or not rent it. I mean, there's really, there's no blockbuster. I mean, there's really, there's no blockbuster anymore, right? So where, where are people going for their DVDs? They're coming, they're coming to the library. And if I wouldn't, you know, and if I was doing an honest analysis of what was driving, the numbers up over the last several years in terms of, I mean, there's a direct correlation in my mind between the number of people who show up at the library and how it's increasing and the number of DVDs that get, that get checked out of the library every year. And, you know, so if I was going to support any of these numbers, I would support the DVD numbers out of any of them. So, uh, just to continue with the drawing people into the library and using the services. The AMH Book Return Hardware Upgrade, uh, makes me madder than a dog because, um, you know, this goes back to, you know, if honestly, if I was going to run for city council, I would run and beat up all of those city council members who supported Measure J. Because all they did over these last few years is keep promising this library money from Measure J. And we not only don't see the money, but when we ask for it, they turn us down. So when I see AMH Book Return Hardware Upgrade on our list of things that we have to pay for, I look to City Hall and I say, why didn't you pay for this? And it makes me mad. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm beyond words on that. But I know it's important. So, um, and I feel like I'm being held hostage for something I know that the city has, should be paying for. And it's really, it's really sad. It's really sad that we run into, you know, these, these dips in our economy where they can force, uh, you know, the, the people of this city to actually, you know, dig deep into their pockets when they were spending it on something else like, um, a park that nobody has even seen yet. It's crazy.
I agree wholeheartedly with that, David. Um, is there any Measure J funds going to be come available?
Not for the library.
I mean, that's just, it's ridiculous.
Uh, you know, David, I totally agree with you on that. That was, I was thinking exactly the same thing. The, uh, the hard, the Book Return Hardware just seems silly that we're even discussing it because it should be, the city should be paying for this. That is maintenance, right? That's, that's not something that, um, the library should be asking for. I, I just can't believe that it got to this point to where she said two of them are not working, one of them is acting up. And, you know, I mean, that should have been taken care of long ago.
Yeah, you know, and honestly, so, you know, if I was going to propose anything to do with this list of things, again, I, I would, I, I would propose, uh, immediately approving the twenty thousand for the DVDs. I think we, we probably need to write a letter to the city council about this AMH Book Return Hardware Upgrade and just say, you know, and shame them into paying it. And, uh, and then maybe just wait on the other books for the time being.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, if you all want to vote on it, yeah, that's a motion.
So just, just a moment. So the, uh, adult nonfiction, isn't that money already allocated? We don't, we don't really vote on that money or is that money something?
Oh, oh, yeah, that's a good point. So the Kropitzler account, yeah, that's, you might as well just approve that as well because that's already part of an endowment that's dedicated to adult nonfiction.
But it's an either or. It could also be the adult reading room if we're going to have a new library or a remodeled library.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah.
Dwandling that down, then it can't be used for that. I don't know, Jeannie, do you have that in your plans or your recommendations for the remodel or for a new library to have such a price?
I think that what, uh, if, if we do get a renovation and we have a, us, like a quiet study room, our name on it. So it would be included in the bigger package, just a general renovation or a new building. As long as you all contribute the trust fund money to the project.
But I just want to make sure a room like that is in your plans.
I, it's just a, it would just be, uh, not a, not a quiet reading room per se, but, uh, a quiet study room. I think would qualify.
And Jeannie, have you gone, um, I, I know that the Foundation was looking at ideas for fundraising, uh, direction. Have you reached out to David and the Foundation, uh, with these needs that are here?
Not specifically because they are in debt to you all. And I think they need to raise some money, uh, to try to get on their feet and get, get some funds. They did, uh, the Foundation did receive a grant for $10,000 that we're going to work on, deciding what to do with that. And, um, I think that my suggestion is going to be mobile hotspots that are loanable to the public. So, um, that would, uh, I think be helpful to the community. It's still not going to get, uh, not, not a lot of mobile hotspots, but it's, it's a start. And, and so if we, um, keep, keep different organizations focused on different, different aspects. I think that's a good balance. So we're not stepping on each other's toes.
So can I add a friendly amendment?
Sure. Will you accept it?
So, uh, so what I had proposed was, uh, for spending $20,000 for the DVDs. Um, that still stands. Um, based on what we just discussed about the Kropitzler account being available for the reading room, I think I'll, I'll leave the $10,000 out of the equation at this point. I still want to have the letter drawn out to the city council, uh, appealing for the Book Return Hardware Upgrade being restored to this, especially since they've been finding new money in this council budget over, you know, just wait a few more days, they'll find $27,000 for us, right? And, uh, and then, and then send another letter to the Foundation, making them aware of these requests from the library that they should be doing fundraising for. So, um, because I think as many items as we give them to make appeals to the public, I think will help them in their messaging. Because if we don't give them projects to fundraise on, then how are they going to fundraise?
Can I just jump in on the Kropitzler account and the nonfiction books? Um, from my perspective, I would like to argue for using the $10,000 for adult nonfiction. Um, because, uh, most of the books that are coming out right now are related to the current historical moment. And we can certainly anticipate a lot more, um, adult nonfiction on that topic in the coming year. Um, and I think it's so crucial to continue to replenish the, um, collection with such material and make it available to people so they can stay informed about what's happening in our country.
So you, uh, in other words, because there is a budget for adult nonfiction. And what this is doing is bringing it up to a hundred percent. That's, your proposal is to bring it up to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Melissa, would you be agreeable to bring it up to, uh, just to five thousand?
Yes, I think, um, as close as we can get. It is, like David said, it's, it's a unique time. And I think, um, supporting the acquisition of books around that topic.
Jeannie, how are you doing? Are you note taking?
Oh, we're recording, so we're good.
Okay, well, I'm thinking.
How's Lisa doing? Lisa's doing great.
Bringing back.
So I will, I will accept Melissa's amendment.
Okay, with my reduction to five thousand?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right.
If she's amenable to that, I'm amenable to that.
Melissa's good. Thank you.
Good.
Okay. So going through this line item, the, the motion before us is, uh, for adult nonfiction, $5,000. For DVDs, $20,000. That the AMA Book Return Hardware Upgrade, we go back to the city council and request that they consider, uh, purchasing that. Anything else that I forgot?
The, the letter to the Foundation about the other item.
Correct. Thank you. A letter to the Foundation and show them, I'd like them to see this budget, to see which items that they would like to, push for their fundraising. Right now, they're really looking for issues. And, and maybe one of these will perk their interest. Okay, we have a motion with minor amendments that have been accepted. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I call for a roll call.
You need a second. You, you need somebody to second the motion.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I had a, a David's motion, uh, Melissa's amendment. Uh, Melissa, was yours also a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So I have a first and a second. Any further discussion on this item before the roll call vote? Okay, Jeannie, roll call please.
Craig Barba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Gardner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Four to zero, pass.
Okay. And Jeannie, I'm assuming that, uh, if things don't proceed as we were hoping they're going to proceed, that you would come back to us and let us, inform us of any changes.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, the next item is item seven C. Uh, Jeannie, and that is page eighteen in your agenda.
Right. This is, um, I just wanted to update you on your library awareness campaign and see if you wanted any, to provide any other direction on this right now. To date, it was a $25,000 project that you all approved. And, um, we have spent $19,736.54, which means we have $5,263.46 available to spend. And I just wanted to check with you and see if you wanted to just let that rest for a bit? Or if you had something specific you wanted to, uh, to put out there to promote? And there's a detailed, uh, general accounting of where the money has gone.
Discussion? When I looked at this item, Jeannie, I was thinking of throwing the 5,000 back into your item seven B. But those are just my thoughts.
The only other thought I had about it was the fact that, um, I don't, I, I don't know what the state of staffing in terms of the library is concerned with these kind of things. Uh, whether or not you've actually got somebody there who's now taken on the mantle of working on, um, marketing for the library. So, um, I know, Jeannie, you wear all hats ultimately, but I just don't know if that's your cup of tea. And, you know, so the thing is, I, I'd almost say until we get some kind of motion in the ocean to really do some marketing as far as your staff is concerned, that we might just, just leave it there for the time being.
Yeah, I mean, I've been handling all the, um, all of the PR and I had, I have a team of librarians and Lisa Brock. She's the operations manager and we're all working together for our, um, our current, um, PR.
I'd certainly be interested in hearing whatever ideas you guys cook up with in the next, uh, couple of months about how, how we, uh, do marketing for the library in a COVID environment. I, you know, I've certainly seen your emails and your, your work with the YouTube and some other places. So, um, you know, I, I think any of us would probably want to, would hear what you're coming up with in terms of ideas, uh, before we ultimately, uh, put this $5,000 back in the nonfiction book category.
I totally agree. I think with the environment changing so rapidly, we don't know if the library is going to be open next week or what we'll have to promote. So, um, I agree, we should just kind of put it on ice so we know what's going on in this world and then go from there.
David, was that a motion?
We can make it one.
Okay, you want to make it one?
Uh, I'd say that we just let the $5,000 sit in that account for further discussion.
And, and, um, Jeannie, is that its own line item?
Yes, it is. It's its own account.
Okay. Uh, Melissa, was that a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so the motion is to have it sit in the item that it's at to be reviewed at a later date. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Craig Barba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Gardner? You want me up? Juanita?
Sorry about that. Yes.
And David Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I thought too. And I just wanted to make sure you knew what was going on with that. So the motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, item seven E, Report About Library Resolutions.
Uh, seven D, like David.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven D, A Report On Social Media Demographics.
Okay, and, um, uh, trustee Cronin had asked for this last time and just, I wanted to report to you what, um, just give you some information back about what's going on with social media. We're, um, we're, we're, we're learning and studying different things. We're evaluating different methods of reaching out to users on social media. We're testing different things to see if our circulation goes up for specific titles. So we're being very scientific about, we are library and information scientists after all. So, uh, this is where we thrive. So, uh, social media, uh, demographics and usage, we currently use Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. We do have YouTube also, uh, but we're really just pushing out content. We're not getting, uh, interaction on that one because, um, we are so small of a user on YouTube. Facebook, we have seventeen hundred and eighty-one followers. Instagram, we, uh, really are just beginners essentially in Instagram. We've only got two hundred and forty-six followers. And in Twitter, we have fourteen hundred and ninety-nine followers, though we don't do a lot on Twitter. The only time we really do Twitter is if we're posting simultaneously across the three platforms. Because our constant contact lets us do that. And, um, and that's nice. And then Facebook and Instagram, you know, they're tied together now. So in some ways, those things can post at the same time. Uh, we've also chosen not to use TikTok or any other, uh, social media platforms right now. Our demographics are these, I, they, these reports, they are what they are and I, they're just copied and pasted screenshots. So it's kind of, kind of, uh, a little hairy. But, uh, you'll get the general idea that, um, this is for Facebook. We, uh, women make up the majority of the users. And sixty-nine percent of our, um, our fans are, are listed as women, uh, thirty percent are listed as men. Uh, the majority of the users are thirty-five to forty-four years old. Uh, in our, in demographics, very few teens at all, uh, and young adults. And mostly from the United States and locally in Palm Springs.
So this is, that was for Facebook or Facebook and Instagram?
That was just Facebook.
Oh, okay. Cause kids aren't on Facebook, they're on Instagram.
I know. But they're not on our Instagram. We noticed that too. Um, let's see, this is kind of, uh, I apologize. They are what they are. Okay. I'm trying to figure out where, where the information is. Let's jump ahead. Page, okay, page twenty-three. This is a, a seven day page summary on, um, again, this is for Facebook. We're, we're not getting a lot of, a lot of interaction, but, um, and then again, that's a seven day. So in a, in a week, you know, we've had some views. Now, this is interesting to me, this page twenty-four, what do they look at? And, uh, it looks like they really look at photos. And we knew this already. We, this is something that we have learned over the years too, is that people really love to look at photos, whether they're memes or just interesting things. It actually, I'm sure the algorithms, algorithms in Facebook. memes or just interesting things. It actually, I'm sure the algorithms, algorithms in Facebook are working here to, to catch people. People like to look at pictures. They also like to look at the videos, and we've got some engagements going on with those. This is for our posts at the end of September. And the one I want to highlight, it's interesting, you know, let's see, we're getting about 175, you know, 100 or so uses. So, we're getting, people are looking, but obviously we want that to be bigger. But we got a huge spike on September 14th, when we, we did a little jab at Netflix, and it got shared on a librarian Facebook page, 40,000 librarians. And so, it got almost 6,000 hits, and they loved it, and it also was on Instagram, got a lot of use, got a lot of looks there, too. So, 6,000 interactions there, what do they call those? Reach, so the reach. And engagement was very high, too. So, that was a lot of fun. It was something, basically, it was a promotion to promote Little Women on DVD, and basically that Netflix doesn't have it, but we do at the library. And, and we've got the book, too. So, that was a lot of fun, and it got a lot of interaction. Storytime, getting some high, high views there, or not views, but reach, possible views. In the month, we're, a month-long summary, we're doing, I feel like we're doing pretty, pretty okay. We're getting some engagements. And now Instagram, I, from what I can tell, they only report the last seven days on their, on their, on their statistics. So, we have 246 followers. Again, 71% women, 29% men, no teenagers, very few young adults, mostly age 35 to 44, again, and mostly Palm Springs. But we're getting some LA users, it's kind of funny on that. And then Twitter is, there's Twitter. We, we don't do a lot, and we haven't had a lot of interaction, but, but we still do have our account open, and we're posting there. So, we're going to try to improve that, too. So, it's nice when we get mentioned by other, other groups. So, here's that post that, that Netflix doesn't have Little Women, but we've got seven versions of it. We thought that was fun. That's our, our demographics and summary of, of all of that. And we're trying to do a schedule, we're trying to schedule our posts and, and have an actual strategic plan when it comes to posting, so that we get some content posted at least once a day when we're open. And so, we're working on that, trying to improve our, our consistency, so that it's not just a burst of information and then nothing.
Any questions for Ginny?
I just want to say thank you for the information, Ginny, and you guys deserve so much credit for handling this on top of everything else. Social media is definitely a full-time job. And I think having this information is really helpful as we start to consider more, in terms of marketing outreach and sharing information with people about what you guys are doing in the future. And one thing that I did want to mention in terms of improving the video engagement and maybe starting to get more subscribers on YouTube, would be as you guys do, start scheduling more of that calendar, doing kind of, doing more kind of heads-up posts about the upcoming live events would be really helpful for parents and things like that, to, to start scheduling it in, you know, just a couple of days beforehand, or mixing that into the mix, letting people know that you're doing the storytime on this, on the Thursdays, and that you're doing the unboxing events. So, if they happen to catch it at a different time, they can tune in when, when it's actually happening and experience it live. Because the algorithm, the Facebook algorithm does promote live viewership over, live videos above everything else. So, it's great to throw in a call to subscribe to your YouTube at the beginning of the live video. But the more people that you get watching your live feed, you're going to get it in front of even more people and really drive those reach numbers up. So, any type of advanced promotion for that will be really beneficial.
Great idea, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ginny. The next item is 7E, Report About Library Resolutions. And that starts. It starts on page 32. So, it's resolutions regarding the library.
Right. I just wanted to state that I'm still waiting for information from the city clerk's office. So, this might be something that we want, we can discuss it now, but I, I still should bring back at a future meeting, because they are doing a transition right now to a new document management system, and there, they were not able to really do any research for me, outside of what we had already talked about at our previous meetings.
David, are you okay with postponing this to the next meeting and have the complete package?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Ginny, you'll handle that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we were, yeah, there is, yeah.
For the benefit of the new members, I mean, it's really just an issue of, we've been looking at trying to figure out whether or not we have, you know, what, what our authority is on the Board of Trustees. I think there's another item that, on the agenda, that more actively speaks to our proposal of using our authority, and that has to do with endowment. But, you know, just to clarify, because we've, we've, over the couple, you know, like, over the time I've been here, that I've tried to use certain resolutions as a measure of what we can and can't do. And then it turns on, you know, it turns out that the city has another resolution I've never seen before, it pops up, and then it's like, okay, well, which one of these resolutions is the right one? So, I think it's a good opportunity to do this. I think ultimately, we might actually have to come to a point where, as a, as a governing board, maybe to actually consider whether or not we want to have an outside council look at all these resolutions, and, and, and figure out whether or not, what authority we really do have, especially when it comes to, whenever we do make a decision as to whether or not we're going to keep the endowment in the hands of the City Council or not. So, not so much the City Council, but the, the city of Palm Springs. So, you know, the more information we have, the better.
I agree. All right, thank you, David. So Ginny, you put this on the agenda for our next trustees meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is item 7F, Discussion About Library Trust Funds, Long-Term Location Of Funds.
Yeah, so I didn't put that on the agenda, so.
Oh, I think you have, you all had to ask for that to come back as an item of discussion, but it doesn't have to be now.
What was your thought, or what was Ed's thought about putting it on the agenda? Was it just because it was just something we need, we knew we wanted to discuss, or?
I have a note.
To add to the story, or?
Just a second.
Well, this item had to do with where we want to have our funds invested? Is that correct?
No, no, this, this is more, well, that's part of the issue, obviously, because if we keep the money in the city, then the city's making the investment decisions. But this really was something that I started raising at the point where the city was starting to find itself in financial peril. And there were discussions about the city using its rainy day funds to cover holes in the budget deficit. And my concern was that I didn't want the library endowment to be confused with any other rainy day fund. And I wanted assurances from the city that, that there was, you know, a, a good method of segregating our, our money away from anything else that would be used to plug holes in the city budget. And if we reviewed the, our discussions in the past, I don't think we came up with a satisfactory answer. So, I think that, that it just necessitated the continuation of the discussion about what we can and can't do with regards to this endowment. So, you know, and part of the, the part of the story, I guess, will be to, and this is something that's been discussed since I've been on the trustees, which is when you have, I don't know what the interest allocation is, I would mention to Ginny earlier for this year, is going to be, and, and what the rate of return has been either. So, there's always been some discussion about whether or not we could get a better rate of return elsewhere. So, so I think that discussion needs to be brought up again, and, you know, as, as we still gather more information about the resolutions that establish our authority, as well as getting more information about what we did get in interest for this year, as well as, you know, and getting a better feel for those issues, then I think we can have a better discussion about where we ultimately want to, to keep the endowment funds.
I'm on two other boards that are having the same discussion at this present time. So, if they come to any resolution, I'll bring that information forward as possible suggestions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other points on this item? Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go to 7G.
So, do you want, can I ask a question real quick on that one? Do you want that to come back at a future meeting, or do you want to wait until after we have the resolution?
Let's wait till, I would recommend we wait to get the resolution information, and then we attack this issue. Does anybody else have any other ideas on that?
I wouldn't mind it, it actually staying on the agenda, you know, you know, because if we do find some information between now and then, you know, we can discuss it then. And if not, we'll just say thank you, we'll pick it up again the next month.
Okay. I'm good with that. Everybody else, okay?
Yes.
So, it'll be a reoccurring item on our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
7G, List Of Current Questions For Library Consultants Regarding Library Planning Report. And that is page 48 in your agenda. This is another item that the expenditure would be coming back to the trust.
And I know Ed wanted, Ed wanted to be, participate in this, and the consultant also wanted to answer questions, but we thought, I, I thought it would be a good idea just to put the questions on in this packet, and you can, you can decide to wait until the next month to have the full discussion, or if you have any, see anything, or any other things you wanted to add.
Yeah, does anybody?
Informational item.
Have any additional questions they'd like to add to this?
Could you clarify as to what the process is right now? Because what is the next, what are the next steps? So, right now, we're asking questions of consultants that are answering questions for us pro bono, in anticipation of, you know, hopefully engaging us to pay them for their services, right?
Correct.
That's what I'm understanding, too.
So, if, you know, when we get the answers to this question, are we going to be able to make a decision as to whether or not we want to engage these consultants, or what it, what it, what the answers to these questions is actually going to get us to?
I think this would help us to make that final decision on whether we want to engage with these consultants, and for how much and for what for. I'm concerned about the timeliness of this. Having studies done at this time, I think that it can be delayed. I'm concerned the amount of money in this budget, to me, was vague. I, when I did the calculations, the liability was over $90,000.
So, we're not, we're not putting ourselves in, at risk of having, getting on the hook for $90,000 by going through this process of asking some questions and getting some answers, are we?
I was under the impression that we were not. But again, Ed's been in contact, Ginny, is that correct?
That's correct. It's, this is just information only, and answering these questions, I think that they would then, once these questions and kind of guidance from you are, are given direction, then the consultants could revise their proposal, and then at that point, you could decide whether to engage their services or not, or to continue, and, you know, the additional fee, or agreed of additional fees. So, yeah, question period.
So, my other question is then, since there is no, you know, I think probably this list of questions probably is a few weeks old. I mean, was there anything in, you know, was Ed thinking about whether or not he wanted to send this list off two weeks ago? I mean, I, I understand he wants to be here when we're discussing the answers to the question, but I just wonder why these questions haven't gone out already?
They already did go to the consultants. So, consultants have these questions already, but the public didn't have these questions.
Okay, okay.
That's why they're in the packet for, for the community to see, too.
Okay.
And I don't know, you know, you all responded to me individually, and then I did coalesce them, but I wanted to make sure that it was out for the, for the community and part of the public process, too.
Oh, no, I totally agree. Thank you for doing that.
Any other comments on this item? Any additions to the questions that are being asked? Okay, Ginny, I assume we put this on the next board agenda.
No action taken.
No action.
On this one.
All right, that concludes our agenda. It's now trustees and staff comments and future agenda items, which I think we've come up with three, maybe, so far this meeting.
I just, I just wanted to let, make one point. Since we started the meeting, I put on my Facebook page the need for people to subscribe to the Palm Springs Public Library YouTube page, and so now we're up to 95 subscribers. Five more to go.
Nice job.
Now, if all of us just make sure that we follow, we might get up to 100.
And all of your, all those junk mail, email accounts, just go get it, go get a YouTube login for that.
Any other discussion items or points? Okay, thank you for your input today. What time is it, Ginny?
It is 7:24.
And I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for your attendance.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, bye-bye. Be safe.
Take care.